Next item on our agenda is 2019-2-R, William Sigmund. Changed the zoning classification from C2 to C3 on approximately 34,000 square feet at 16780 Highway 90 in DeZalman, Council of District 4. Yes, sir.
Yeah, this is a request to rezone two separate lots, both of which have two different zoning districts and used by a single business. The first property is Lot WC-1. It fronts on Highway 90 and is Zone C2 and is the primary location of the business which is on-site, which is Outcast Marine. They provide boat repair services. This portion is Zone C2 and are looking to change it to C3. The other property involved is directly behind it and is part of the business. It is Zone R1A-M and they are looking to also change that to C3 so that the entire business site is one C3 zoning. The area that comprises Lot WC-1, which is the front lot, this was rezoned from R1A to C2 in April 2004. The applicant submitted a companion application for a special permit for a repair shop. This would be the boat repair shop. This was considered comparable to automotive repair and was approved. Shortly after the rezone and special permit were granted, the current applicant's purchased the property. It was re-subdivided to create the current lot and they permitted Outcast Marine with the stipulation that airboats cannot be run at the site. They requested, another rezone was requested in 2007. This was the change of zoning to C3. The application was withdrawn from consideration by the Planning Commission at the applicant's request. In 2008, the owners purchased Lot A, which is the rear lot, which is currently Zone R1A-M and also part of this rezoning request. This lot has 20 feet of frontage on Norman Avenue, which is its main access point. It also appears to be accessible through the building on the front lot. There are two, it's developed with two large metal canopies, which seem to be for coverage storage. We found that the request does not meet any of the guidelines for rezoning. We find that the current C2 zoning allows for reasonable use of the property since the current use was permitted with a rezoning of C2 and with an associated special permit. The area consists mostly of single-family residences. Unlike several other portions of Highway 90, which is primarily C2 or C3, most of this has remained residential and the uses reflect that. We found that there's been a history of rezonings that have been attempted along this stretch of Highway 90 and they've only really gone as far as C2 when usually when a request is for a C3, it hasn't been supported either by the department or the commission or the council. It's always stopped at C2. So we find based on that and the, you know, C3 use is not really being compatible with the largely residential makeup of the area and the limitations of C2, it doesn't really meet any of the three criteria for rezoning and the department does recommend denial.
Okay, thank you, sir. The public hearing for 2019-2-R, the reclassification from C2 to C3 at 16780 Highway 90 in DeZalman. Anyone here to speak for or against this particular matter? Yes, sir, please step forward. You state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, sir, it's William Sigmund, 16780 Highway 90 in DeZalman. Pretty much looking to rezone to get out a special permit because we would like to further improve the business and like to grow it. But on the other hand, we don't want to have the carrot in front of our face where our neighbor, we're having trouble with our neighbor and he can pretty much call at any time and then pull, we don't want to have our permit pulled and shut us down just because they feel like it or whatever. So we've been spending more time lately with him and Paul Hogan of dealing with trying to shut me down than actually doing business. So we didn't know what other way to go about it than just go to C3 and everything be fine. So I don't know if there's any way of C2 without a special permit or whatever, but we've been doing business there for, I don't know, since '05 without any issues except for the one complaint and it's just, it's getting old.
Yes, sir.
So I don't know what else to say. I guess y'all see it very shortly.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak for or against? Please step forward. You state your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Alvin Meyer Jr. I live at 16760 Highway 90 in DeZalman. I'd like to just make a note of what he just said. I am not trying to shut him down. I would not even attempt it. There have been some issues only with the airboat situation that could cause some problems in the neighborhood. But I'm just going to read what I have written right here. "I own a lot of property next to 16780 Highway 90." Part of that property he wants to rezone goes deep into the neighborhood section. "We are opposed to this property being rezoned to C3. This amounts to spot zoning as there are no C3 zoning areas in any of the residential neighborhoods from JB Green Street west to the Business District in DeZalman. The few commercial properties in this section are all Zone C2. Some attempts were made in the past to rezone to C3, they were all denied. The issue is possibly with C3 zoning allows for changes of ownership in the future to create entirely different business. Specifically according to regulations, those could include barrooms, nightclubs, lounges, and manufacturing. All these would greatly affect the surrounding neighborhood. Once given a C3 classification, there would be very little residents could do to object to these problems that naturally arise from these types of business. Our surrounding neighborhood hasn't had a bar that tried to reopen under the C2. It was not successful. However, the C3 zoning request currently granted here could result in that bar again trying to reopen. The property at 16780 that is now Zone C2 has a stipulation that airboats cannot be run. If C3 zoning is allowed, this stipulation is no longer in effect. Airboats then could be run on the property. Airboats are very loud. They cannot be run quietly. Most of us have heard them being used in our wetlands and bays and they can be heard miles away. Imagine they're being stored up in your neighborhood while being worked on. No one signed this petition wants this to become a reality that they have to deal with. Residents signed this petition objecting to C3 zoning change. A neighborhood should be a peaceful place to live and raise children. C2 zoning businesses are better fit in our neighborhood. Again, as stated, C3 property has the potential of vastly changing business affecting the surrounding properties of nearby families. Please consider these residents when making your decision." And also I would like to say, I would never try to shut him down. He's been there since 2004. I owned the lot. I gave, I rezoned it for him. I've been knowing him a long time. And technically, I could not even shut him down. I think that's an impossibility that I would have to go through a legal, it would take years because they can't even shut down barrooms and all. They give a lot of trouble. It's a matter of issues and years. So one person, Paul Hogan can't do it and I can't do it and there's no attempt. It's just that when you give a C3, it'll never come off and people don't live forever. People retire, they move away, businesses change. The business next to him, this is in the third ownership, so you don't ever know what's going to come there. He may be there 20 years, he may be there one year. And that C3, whatever wants to come in, really we can't stop it then. So appreciate it. I hope y'all make your decisions considering the neighborhood itself. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else here to speak for or against? Yes, sir. State your name and address for record, please.
My name is Ryan Dufren, 105 Chalks R. Drive in Luling. I actually own the resident, own the business adjacent to Mr. Sigmund. And in the past couple of years, I've noticed there's been a lot of police phone calls coming into our properties for vehicles being parked on the side of the road, cars being parked on the side of the road and that kind of stuff. We both have businesses. Will's has boats. We have, you know, trailers and trucks that we, you know, we load stuff out. We have to have access to the side roads so that we can safely get our, you know, trucks and trailers and stuff within, you know, within our, the boundaries of our property. I know for a fact that, I can't, I can't say I know for a fact that he's the one calling, but I do know that we've been reprimanded several times for leaving a vehicle parked on the side of the road for a very short time just to unload. It's becoming an issue. I believe I'm on the agenda tonight as well. We were moved to go to C3 as well. With Will, we thought it would be, you know, easier for both of us to get a C3 zone. And that's all I, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else here to speak for or against this particular issue? Yes, sir. State your name and address, please, sir.
Corey Dufren, 218 Matherne, by Gosh, DeZalman. Yeah, I mean, that's my brother. We're partners in the business next door to Will. I mean, we there all day long. I mean, I don't, I don't see any kind of like, I'm just here to come in on a noise issue. I mean, I mean, we don't see any like ridiculous or, you know, loud noises coming from there. I mean, he works on boats. You got to start a boat here and there, but I mean, it's not like it's, you know, real loud or anything. And I mean, I just kind of, you know, second what my brother said. I mean, you know, we have any issues where, you know, we park a trailer right close to it, like on the other side of the ditch between us and the highway. We park like a trailer right, like along the ditch, which is, you know, not, you know, blocking anybody's view, but the police come and make us move it and stuff like that. It's just like, you know, we'd like to get that to stop. But I mean, that's pretty much it. I mean, just second what my brother said and, you know, the noise issue to me is not even an issue.
So I got a question for you. Right now, it's not a noise issue, but if it started using airboats, you think that it may be an issue?
I don't know. I mean, I don't think that, I don't think that he's going to be like a airboat mechanic. I mean, I see, I see an airboat there once in a while. I mean, you know, if you work on something, if you got to, you know, crank it up for a second and, yeah, you have an airboat that's loud. You start the airboat, it's like a car, you know, like a truck, I guess, you know? I mean, if he's working on an airboat, you don't like take, you know, drive to the bayou to see if it starts. You work on an airboat, you start it, it starts, then you can go test, test drive. But, you know, obviously, I wouldn't want somebody running, you know, and revving an airboat next to my house for sure, but I mean, I don't think that's something that he's trying to do. Yeah, so.
What are y'all business hours? What is the business hours of operation?
Probably, probably normally like 6:00 AM to like maybe 5:30 at the most. I mean, unless we got some, you know, unless we got some kind of emergency stuff, then sometimes we work at night, but not too often.
So that's Monday through Friday or weekends too?
Monday through Fri, Monday through Thursday, we try, but it's Friday sometimes too. I mean, look, we work on weekends if we have to, but it's not very often.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Anyone else here to speak for or against? Yes, sir. State your name again, please.
William Sigmund.
Yes, sir.
First of all, I want to let you know, we don't work on airboats.
Okay.
So the one time we worked on an airboat was for one of Hurricanes. So it was a national disaster. And that was the Sheriff's Department. They brought it in there. They started it up. He complained, all right? So, and that was to save people on our mine. So I did what I had to do to fix it so they can go back saving lives. Recently, one of my good friends just brought an airboat over, didn't even run it at the facility because I'm like y'all, I don't, I'm not there to make noise. My family lives there. So what does he do on the way back from going to the pasture to run the airboat? He stops me, confronts me, says I'm not supposed to work on it. So I told him I can work on whatever I want, can't run it. So he's like, oh, well, no, that's not it. So he says I need to contact him and get approval first to see if it's okay with him if I can work on it. That's the kind of stuff that we're dealing with. We're not running the airboats. I live there. My kids live there. So I'm not looking to do anything out of the norm. And far as barrooms and everything, it still has to get through y'all planning and zoning to get approved. So I'm not looking to do anything that what we're doing today.
So if we, if we, if we rezone this and put a stipulation that no airboats there, that wouldn't be a problem for you?
No, it would not be a problem, but it's not fixing the problem.
Yes.
Because he is still, whether one shows up or somebody pulls on the side of the road to get a part for their, not airboat, but their outboard, he's automatically assuming that we're working on it. Just because something pulls up in the driveway don't mean that I'm working on it.
Okay.
My business is not airboats, it's outboards.
We stipulated no airboats would be powered up or run on the property.
Yes, I have no, no complaint with that. But we have, we have outboards today that have the same exact engine that's in an airboat and that gets run.
Yes.
So, and it's not making any, any noise. So that's, that's the only thing.
Yes.
I don't want to video it every time I have to start up an outboard.
Yes, sir. Please stand.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, like the report says, the department does feel that the correct way to proceed with these businesses is to keep them at their C2 zoning, which does allow us to put stipulations on them because it requires a special permit. The zoning will not allow stipulations. A change of zoning district to C3 is a change of zoning district to C3, which would allow automotive repair. We would consider boat repair comparable and there would be no restrictions on what they could start up. So the businesses exist now with C2 zoning and a special permit.
Right. But the stipulation is for a barroom, it would have to come back for a special permit to be approved.
In the C3 zoning district, a barroom does require a special permit approved by not only the Planning Commission, but also the Parish Council.
Okay. Anyone else to speak for or against? State your name and address, please, sir.
Billy Woodruff, 615 down to Bayou Road, District 4 Councilman. I'd like to see both these businesses expand. The, the C3 zoning would give them a chance to expand and we all know that when you expand like that, it also creates jobs. These people, if their business, as their business grows, they add on more people. And I would like to think that we encourage business rather than discourage business. And anytime you're hiring more people, local people, that's a good thing. I mean, you're getting local people back to work, they're getting good jobs and all. And I actually went for a little walk through the neighborhood, knocked on a couple of doors, and I asked the people who live around here, is there a problem with noise? They all told me no. I said, would you have a problem with them expanding their business? They said, not a bit. So I'd ask for your consideration in changing to the C3.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Yes, sir. State your name again, please, sir.
My name's Alvin Meyer Jr. I do not want to get into he said, he said, this said. So all I can tell you is, we have, the petition I went down to the neighborhood was concerned about potential issues in the future. Working on airboats is fine. And I have it recorded when he ran the airboat a while back. I asked him, you know, he was running the airboat. He told me he had to run it a couple more times and then he was finished. I said, that's fine, go ahead and do that. I didn't remember exactly what we had on the stipulation, so I went and talked to Mr. Earl about it and he told me that, you know, he's not supposed to do it. If I would file a written complaint, some, they would have to go to the law department, legal department. I did not do that. I do not want to hurt his business. I didn't want to shut him down, but I didn't want the C3 in our neighborhood. And all those 50 or 60 people all agreed that we do not need future problems with C3. Yes, they can expand their business, they can expand it on C2, they can do, they can do just about everything they want except maybe manufacturing boats. I'm not sure about all of that, but their business been, he's been in business since 2004. He, he's full-time and one time he was part-time, now he's full-time. So we don't need more issues. Our neighborhood is basically residential. See, both of these people here, in 20 years from now, they may not be around and there'll be other businesses that could be worse for the neighborhood. Right now, that is compatible for the neighborhood and surrounding neighborhood. They can say what they want. An airboat is not an outboard engine and you crank that baby up, you're going to hear it and I don't care how far you're in that neighborhood. So, and yeah, he may never work on it. He don't have to work on it. He's got a good enough business with the boats. And that was just a protection for my fallen law who lived about 20 feet from his property. Now my father died, so, you know, technically, if he wants to run one once in a while, talk to me, I don't have a big issue with that. But I wouldn't want that worked on every day and run every day. And the neighborhoods, the neighbors don't want to do it. You know, if all of them could come here and say the same thing, they would. I mean, the parking issue has been solved, it cannot be solved, so it's just dead wait. You know, the state don't care about how they park. They can use the highway shoulder, they can use the right-of-way, they got some time, they can park as much as they want. They're not really concerned about it anymore. So it doesn't look good for the neighborhood, but I let it go. So what? You know, go ahead and park. I did not call the cops on them. It doesn't affect me getting out of my driveway. If other people live on the other two streets, they may have. I'm not going to call the cops on them every time they got a car on the road. It's impossible to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else here to speak for or against this issue? Hearing none. Public hearing is closed. Any questions or comments from the commission? Yes, sir.
Can you sum up what differences the C2 and C3 would mean for them? Can they, I'm a little confused, I guess, on...
The permitted uses, the permitted activities on the property, the things that they can do on the property increase.
Right.
The number of things and the intensity of the things. In terms of building, I mean, with the exception of building out the rear where the canopies are, this portion of property is currently zoned R1A-M. We're not sure, I mean, we know when Outcast Marine purchased it. We're not sure when they put the canopies up. And this little spit here, the access to it goes between two different residences. So rezoning this portion to C3 would allow the activities and things that happen currently up here in the red to move back into the yellow. But in terms of building more things, frankly, I cannot imagine where they would put anything else in terms of a structure.
Okay. So it was said that going to C3 would help the business grow. Would going to C3 would help grow that can't do to C2? That's what I'm a little confused on.
If you're going to speak, you have to come to the mic so we can have this on record, please. That's fine. Your name again?
Sigmund.
Yes, sir.
The part with growing is, right now, we want to invest in our business. That's my, pretty much retirement. So to put money into it, I don't want to have a special permit or something special that something can happen in the parish, somebody can dislike us or whatever and cause problems and then we wind up getting our business, our license pulled from us. So all we looking to be able to do is basically protect ourselves so we don't get shut down because this is my only job and this is my life. So I'm not looking to, we're not looking to change anything except for just, just be more secure at night. That's it.
I'm kind of a little bit confused with that also because...
That's fine.
If you're abiding by that special permit, it's never going to be taken away.
Well, not, it's not according to what we've been told. So, and, and just like how he says, oh, if you would come ask me to run something, I don't need, I know I can't run an airboat. So I don't need that. But if I start up a boat motor and he's having a bad day, I don't need somebody else hounding me and they always taking away. We spending more time fighting to stay open right now than actually getting work done. So that's what I'm trying to relieve because it's not worth keeping up with all of this. It's basically, because it's, you can't get any work done, just, I mean, it is what it is.
So it's about police coming there or the planning and zoning or, I mean, is there any documentation on it?
Police, planning, zoning. I mean, it's pretty much, it's everybody. I mean, we not, we not, and we went and talked to all the surrounding neighbors. They never heard us, they have no complaints. The only one complaint is the guy here today. And the people that, that live right door-to-door where my window meets their window, none of them have anything to say. They don't have anything to complain. If you want 100 people to, for me to sign a petition saying that everything that they want the business, we can get that just as well. But whenever we asked the people that's surrounding us that the letters went out, not one person had a problem with it.
Okay.
So we just, we just trying to keep, be able to sleep at night knowing somebody's not going to just flip the light switch and then we shut down. And after we hired people or tried to invest in our business, that's, that's all.
Okay. Thank you, sir. What else would interest you?
So you're looking to get C3 just for basically an insurance policy to keep your business open?
Yep, or C2 without, I don't know how it goes, but C2, you can't have a mechanic shop there. So I guess that's why they did a special permit. So...
And I know you have a very successful outboard motor business, so, I mean, airboat is not in your, your future at all.
No.
And I mean, I don't think he has a problem with you occasionally working on an airboat and your business hours or normal business hours, I mean, you shut down at 5:30, so it's not like you're working on stuff at 10 o'clock at night.
Even if I run, I mean, even if I work at night, I know better than to run a motor. I'm not, I don't, I live there, my kids live there, so I'm not going to wake them up by doing something like that. So, I mean, we live there.
Any other comments or questions?
Yes.
Okay.
So what has, what have the complaints been or have been filed? Have there been anything filed with planning and zoning? I'm, I'm...
I think Mr. Meyer maybe came in and spoke to people on staff, but that didn't result in a complaint that was lodged or logged into the database. We have no complaints on file.
Been harassed by state, by planning and zoning.
By state, by state who?
State DOTD. Because a boat, they're big boats, as y'all pass by, you can see. So the guys will park on the shoulder of the road, come in, see where they need to go. We block traffic, back them down, try to get them in safely or whatever. So somebody didn't like that because there was an eyesore. So they kept calling DOTD, state, state came out. So we trying to improve all of this stuff and that's why we was trying to include the back. So if we can park in the back or move more boats just in the back, use it for storage basically, then we can relieve some more stuff in the front to make more parking for bigger things, stuff like that. It's just, it's, it's been, I wouldn't say weekly, every month, something has been coming up with planning, zoning, state, all that stuff. It's just, it's getting up very old.
Okay.
So would that solve the issue of changing the R1A-M to C2?
Yeah, because, yeah, because now state says it's over with, it's done.
No, he said C2, not C3 because you're still going to have the complaints if you do that with the boat and you block the road and all of that.
Yeah, correct.
That doesn't change with zoning. It has nothing to do with your zoning and what you're doing. It's doing about obstructing...
That's right. We nip it right now.
Highway.
So it goes from that to, oh, you're not, you don't have the right parking. Oh, you need this, you need that. It's, I'm just giving you an example.
So how does C3 change that about parking and interfering with the Highway 90?
Well, the part, the only thing we can say with parking is we're going to try to put some more stuff in the back to eliminate...
That's what I'm saying. So if it just changed the rest of it to C2, that would allow you to park back there without having to change it to C3?
Okay, but can you get rid of a special permit?
No.
But then that's why I want C3 because you can still come in and say, no, oh, I thought you ran an airboat? No, you shut down. So I don't want to keep investing money into my business whenever you can pull the plug.
But, but you said you weren't going to do an airboat, so I, that's why I'm, I'm...
We're not. Because what I'm trying to say is if I'm running something and he says, oh, it's an airboat, he's got a... airboat, he's got a bad day, I don't have, I don't work on airboats. So that's what I'm trying to get at. I don't know where all this is coming from, but that's, if y'all pass in front of my place, y'all see I don't work on airboats.
So how long has the special permit been in effect?
Since '04, '05, something like that.
Okay, so 14 years.
Yeah.
And you've never come before us or never had anything posted from planning and zoning on your business of in violation of the special permit, correct? It's been hearsay, this and that?
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, in that field, it did not get enough votes to pass. This will go before the council. You can plead your case with them, sir.